Welcome. Call the meeting to order for the Board of Selectmen, August 13th, 2024, at 6:31. First on our agenda, Secretary's Report. We have three to approve: July 23rd, regular meeting; special meeting 22nd of July; and August 6th. We can take them separately if we have corrections, or all together.
I just want to make a clarification on 7/23.
Okay.
Section 7, Region 4 report. I reported that the field project is slightly delayed due to weather. I just want some clarification on that. The project is not behind schedule. Again, the project is not behind schedule. It was slow because it had rained three days that week, and they could not start putting the track down due to the weather. So again, the project is not delayed. It's not behind schedule. So I just need to clarify that because it was brought to my attention that it's not behind schedule. So, just clarification.
It started three days later due to weather.
Due to the weather. But it is on schedule. Anyone wants to drive up there? The football field is down. They're putting the markings on it now, and it looks lovely.
Yeah, it looks really good.
But I just wanted to clarify that.
Okay.
Other than that, do you have a...
With that clarification, I'll make a movement that we accept these three sets of minutes with the aforementioned clarification for the July 23rd meeting.
I'll second it.
All right. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Guess you don't have to do that with minutes. Okay, Audience of Citizens, the public's reminded to state your name for the record, and we try to limit people to three minutes. So, anyone like to address this?
Bob Kennington, Winter Avenue. I know it's taking time to get the change of the tires and everything. Did they give you a different price on the removal of the tires? Because on your thing, you got the car tires at $3 a tire, and then they charged $3.50 a tire for the car tires. But $15 for the trucks were right.
Okay. We did change it to $3 because that's what the bill said last we had looked, but we can certainly change that to $3.50.
Yeah, if you look at the bill, because I've shown to Dwayne before, and it said $3.50 per tire.
Okay. Thank you for noting that. But it has been changed up at the transfer station, so, to the three.
Yeah, but it's just on the paperwork. If somebody questioned us, and the other thing was, is we did get a copy of it, and I seen Eric this morning, you know, on the new contract. What we ran across was, we had a Chester resident come in, and he had a text on his phone saying that they don't have to pay for brush. So, Eric gave me the full contract so we, you know, cover our backsides. But from the agreement, I believe they do pay for the brush.
Not if it comes in in a pickup truck.
In a trailer.
In a trailer.
These are coming in on trailers.
Then they're supposed to be paying in the contract. I have talked to the first selectman in Chester.
The only ones that we slide as far is coming in on small trailers and telling it would a car because they don't own a pickup truck. And they're not big loads.
Thank you. So that was brought up to me, that there was a Chester resident that came in, and he had gone back to the selectman in Chester, and she reached out to me, and we kind of took that out. So, thank you.
Mike Donello, 209 Main Street. Couple of quick things. Lettering on the police cars? Where are we with that?
I got the police to tell me that they approved one of my designs the other day. He wanted to talk to the rest of the crew, so...
You're the police chief, am I not correct? Okay. So, is it up to you to decide, or is it up to the employees to decide?
Well, I wanted it to be up to the police so they could have a say in the design. But if they don't pick something soon, then I'm going to go with the design that had the town seal on it, or just something plainer like Essex stuff, which is the town, and a white...
When can we expect it? I know people have been asking. It's starting to become...
I guess in the near future.
Near future. Do you, Carol, do you have any control over where these guys are positioned during the course of their shifts?
We have some conversation about where I think we need to address, you know, like Union Street has been a hot topic. So, then they'll kind of sit out there.
Because they don't do Main Street anymore, either behind Liberty Bank, or behind Adams, or down at the Essex Town Line. But we don't see them in our downtown Village District anymore. I'm just curious as to what their reason...
Well, I've seen them downtown, so I think maybe we're just not seeing them.
I'm here 24 hours a day, seven days a week, and they're not anywhere from Devittsfield to Kirtland Commons.
Okay, well, I can talk to them.
You know, the visibility for us on Main Street, given the speeding problem, I think, you know, even if they're not going to hand out tickets, I think they should at least have some presence there.
Okay, thank you. Anything else? Anyone else? Tom?
Tom Brooker from the Sustainability Committee. I just want to thank the Board of Selectmen for considering making Tim Hout, Pastor Hout, our poet laureate. It helps us to attain some of our goals that we're trying to reach in the Sustainable Committee. And I just appear on behalf of the committee and say thanks.
Tony Ball, 27 Sixth Street. I have a comment and then a question. So, on the town, you have a town meeting date that you want to set, and I just wanted to remind you that we never have a chance to pull the planning and zoning fees out of that. So, we should do that when we, out of the ordinance, is when we set the town meeting. Because we only had the one page, and we needed two pages, and the town clerk said we couldn't do it that night, so we should throw that back up. And then the question is, I know we're talking about labeling the police cars, is that going to expand into all the town cars?
Well, that was the plan way back when. So, I think it's still known. Stephen should do it.
Okay. I'm just curious. Thank you.
So, come and see me about the fees, so you remind me.
Okay.
Because I thought that was done. I remember the town clerk said there was an issue to do.
Yeah, it was like the last page, we couldn't pull it up, so we sort of figured out.
Okay. Anyone else? Okay, so, update on drainage issue at 63 Oak Ridge Drive. Last, I believe, we reported at one of these meetings that we were moving forward, and then we had to, we kind of put it on hold a little bit so we could get further information from the town engineer, correct? So now we have actually accepted, four bids came in. One was awarded to Winthrop Construction. Work is planning to start there by September 1st. And the work should be concluded, the contract asked to have it concluded by the end of October so that the homeowner could have her yard and everything back. So, our building official has been working with the homeowner to help move this along and resolve it. So, that was just the report on that. Anything else that, we've had several meetings, so, okay. And I apologize, I'm kind of losing my voice today. Discussion on ARPA projects. All right. So, the Board of Selectmen, we were a little frustrated. We'd met several, several times, kept coming up with projects, trying to move them forward, go to the Board of Finance. Just couldn't really line up, line up the two groups to agree on 100% of what we were presenting. So, we met again twice, and Selectmen Gates and Russell, who both have pointed out, so in our minutes that we approved tonight, were kind of our other initial discussions. So, what was finally decided, we met with the Board of Finance, joint meeting on Thursday. We came up with another set of projects. And so, what we are planning to move forward to a town meeting, which Tony just referenced, it'll be coming up sometime. Our plan is early September, but it might get pushed back if we want to put more into the town meeting, like the fees for planning and zoning. We have somebody who wants to join the Community Health Committee. That has to be voted on at town meeting. So, the things that are moving forward, the projects, we have one, two, three, four, five, six projects, and we're going to propose $25,000 for signage, the tourism piece that Jerry Roberts had proposed, $45,000 for planning and zoning, to create a master plan of downtown Deep River, and there's other aspects of that. I do have their printout here. If anyone would like to look at any of these handouts after the meeting, they'd come up to see me. $91,000 is going to go to the transfer station. There's a bunch of expenditures up there that our new transfer station committee had come up with, including new roll-off containers, fencing, a gatehouse, cameras, that sort of thing. $56,000 will go to the Fire Department for the extradition tool, extra, extra whatever it's called, jaws of life, basically. $15,000 for the Department of Public Works for a ride-on blower. And the $28,000 that we think will be remaining, there might be a little give and take with some of these numbers because we're still figuring out what was spent on the Music Fest for Park and Rec. The figures that we have here are basically pulling back about $40,000 is what we're estimating from the Park and Rec allotment. They were allotted $75,000 to spend on the Music Fest for three years, but because contracts have to be signed by this December, that won't, that won't be an event that can happen. I mean, you know, the nature of that event, you can't really sign contracts that early. So, given that, about $40,000 coming back, we've allocated, and the last $28,000 will go towards purchasing a six-inch pump that currently is being utilized over at the Oak Ridge Drive drainage issue. We probably could explain this better, but we rented a new pump, and now, in order to kind of rent-to-buy, I guess, so if we wanted to buy out the pump, it's a lot cheaper to get a pretty much a brand-new pump now for about $28,000. Is that...
Yeah, we have 50% of the price in their rental already. Seven months, eight months of rental, and they will put that towards the purchase price and buyouts roughly $25,000 to $30,000. I don't know the exact figure. So, instead of giving the pump back and losing out on the $30,000 that we've already put into it, we're going to use it for the Fire Department, Department of Public Works, and the WPCA. So, it'll be a joint pump that if it's needed, we have our own, where we don't have to rely on Timmy and his crew to go out there and bring a whole pumper out there for the Fire Department to pump someone's basement out. So, I think it's...
We have events for the usage of that? I mean, Tim would be able to...
It's an insurance policy, Mike. I look at it as an insurance policy. Tim, he'll tell you, they spent countless nights up there pumping up this basement with the fire trucks. If we had this pump, we could use it. And that's, I hope we never have to use it in that situation again for the homeowners, but the WPCA always passed out a standby pump for something. So, I think it's a good investment in something that we've invested $30,000 in already. You know, I think it's an insurance policy. Are we going to use it every week, every month? Probably not, but when we need it, it's here.
I agree with Dwayne on that. You could look at the $27,000 expenditure already as a sunk cost. However, we did not anticipate this problem happening, and with the increased rain we've been having, and the flooding, and all sorts of things, this will be put to good use.
We'll maintain that. You know, if it's going to sit idle for a while, maybe doing usages, you know what happens to it.
Probably the Public Works will do it.
It has to go before board meeting at the Public Works to figure out...
No, if we need it, we need it. It's just sometimes when things sit like that.
It's a good, a good question to ask. Another, something else to maintain.
But again, we were very fortunate at the time that the Fire Department was manning one, two trucks up there, pumping this out, this basement, that we didn't have a fire somewhere where we needed the pumps to go somewhere else. So, I look at it as, again, an insurance policy.
That's a good point. The Fire Department was heroes on that one.
Yeah.
They were there, yeah. Okay, so that's pretty much the ARPA monies. That will come up, like I said, the Board of, at a town meeting to vote on. And that adds up, if you add everything up, it's about $245,000 that we are proposing to allocate to those projects.
And that will be the remainder of the ARPA money that we received.
Yes, and then we will be done.
Comes up to $260, Carol. Not to correct you on that, but remember, we added the money back. So, this, this amount totals up to $260 because we ended up bringing in the extra used money.
Took the other 15 back. That's right. That is correct. All right, so $260. Joel, you got that as a correction?
I did.
Yeah, okay. Thank you. All right, so the town meeting date to be set, but that's pretty much, the crux of that is going to be the ARPA. We can talk tonight about setting the date. I was thinking like the 9th or 10th of September. We have a meeting on the 10th, I believe. So, I don't know.
It would be in the evening?
Yes.
We have a WPCA board meeting on the 9th.
On the 9th. So, then I didn't know, Wednesday, Thursday, or go to the following week.
Could have it at 6:00.
No, the 9th won't work for me.
Oh, the 9th. That's a special day.
That's the day after the wedding.
I thought the wedding was on Sunday.
It's on Sunday at 8:00.
Oh, okay. Dwayne's out. All right, we're not doing that. Well, we'll come up with a date because, again, it might take, if we're going to rewrite an ordinance for planning and zoning or something, we have to, that might take some time.
I think we're just going to mix it. So, we're just taking it out of the ordinance. So, it should be, should be...
Okay, okay. All right, so date to be set, so just watch the, watch the news for that. All right, so tax rebates, number five. So, we've got five tax rebates because residents paid for vehicles that then they, you know, took off the tax rolls, sold, or whatever. So, I have one, two, three, four, five. So, I just need a motion to approve five tax rate, tax rebates totaling $399.78.
So, moved.
Second.
Great. Okay, number eight. Review of the town hall mold remediation and other projects. I just kind of lumped that together. Don't really have much new to report on the town hall mold remediation, but I will state, in case it wasn't stated. Basically, the end of August, we're looking to have Service Pro, Service Clean, come to clean out the basement. First step is to empty the basement out of everything. We're going to have veterans ways shut off for this work. It'll have like, you know, Jersey barriers or something out there. We're going to have some dumpsters out here and a shredder. And once the basement is empty, then other professionals will come in and find out what the source of the moisture is, and then how to treat it. So, we really can't get a good scope of work until the basement is empty, and they can look at, you know, again, if, you know, water's coming up from the floor, coming through the wall, something like that. So, but just the end of August, we're going to probably start the work here. And other projects, the other one I was thinking of was the Cedar Swamp Road, but I don't know if we've heard from all those neighbors, so perhaps we don't talk about it at depth until we know more.
The only big issue, yeah.
There's a stone wall on that road that seems to be failing. And so, we're, the building official and DPW have been talking with the neighbors that, you know, about that wall, kind of coming up with what they want for a solution, you know, if we tear it down, or if we rebuild or something. So, what other projects? Do you want to talk anymore about Region 4 in here? Is there anything going on up there?
The mold, we've awarded the contract to Noble Construction. They're doing all their cementals right now, and I would be very surprised if they don't start this week to start doing the work.
What was Pelletier?
I mean Pelletier, I'm sorry. I'm sorry, Pelletier. It was Pelletier that John...
I saw that in a note earlier.
Yeah, Pelletier from Clinton.
There's so many phases up there. There could be more than one contractor.
They're the contractor, Phase 2, and that's putting everything back together, putting the new valves in, the new sealant tiles, remediation's all done.
Great.
And the fields, like I said, the fields are moving right along. The main football field will be done for open-up school.
That'd be great. I hope they're going to do a ribbon cutting or something.
I hope so.
Also, I did put in my weekly news. We got a letter from the superintendent's office that did go out to all the students. The students from John Winthrop will report to Valley for their first days of school, and I think the anticipation is still around Thanksgiving, where then they'll have the kids back at John Winthrop, and Valley will get their school back. So, if you didn't get that note from the superintendent and you have children, John Winthrop kids are reporting to Valley this year. And they have it all worked out a lot better. They said the kids will actually be using the special areas for their specials, like the Art Room for Art, which didn't happen last year. It was a little more chaotic up there. So, any other projects, Catherine? We've had so many meetings. We've had so many special meetings, so, okay. Those are all I could think of. Let's see. So, the Deep River Poet Laureate. So, this was an exciting thing that we talked about a little while ago. Dwayne had a great idea to announce it at Deep River Day, and, you know, but we don't know if Deep River Day is going to happen. We're getting close to that. We're hoping some, some part of Deep River Day will happen, or some like level of Deep River Day, right? We want it to look something like a special day, but we don't know what that's going to look like. So, so we did want to take this opportunity to announce that we're very excited to have a poet laureate in Deep River, and we would like to announce that it is the Reverend Tim Hout, who serves as Minister of the Deep River Congressional Church, where he's been serving there for years and years, and he always has done so much for the community. So, he's writing poetry. He'll write something special for a town event, and we thought it was quite fitting that he would be the first person to have this honor. So, we will be making an official recommendation, official award...
Proclamation.
And proclamation at some future date. So, probably mid-September probably is the perfect time, but might not be at Deep River Day. So, congratulations, Tim.
He'll have to write a poem for acceptance.
And I think the idea would be to take one of his books and have people that attend read some of his poetry. It'll be very nice. So, if anyone, we wrote up something that we read at a couple of meetings ago. So, if anybody would like to see, again, come up after the meeting, I won't read it all for the record because I think I did that a couple of meetings ago. Okay. Let's see. Speed enforcement, traffic discussion. I know Mike touched on this a little bit. I met with the state trooper. We meet very often, and some days I see them out there a lot, other days, you know, I don't, but I know they're busy. They're up at Region 4 often. So, we did talk about, again, putting some extra speed limit signs on Union Street especially. There, apparently, when you come down from Chester, there's one there, and then there's not another one for quite far down. So, the police would like us to start with that. They did put the radar sign up. It needs a charged battery.
Okay, it's been out for a couple of weeks. Is the, Carol, is the concern coming from Chester in, or is it more from the Duncan Strip in the direction of Chester? That's where the speeding, there's an awful lot of traffic I see coming down because it's hard to get out of my driveway on Union Street. But I will say, the recent citizen complaint has been from Dunkin' Donuts. It follows from what Christine Newt, she had presented, I don't know, a couple of months ago to us. And this was Spencer saying, it's the same request in essence, and they'd like a stop sign.
Right. So, we had proposed a stop sign at Church Street and one at Lafayette as well. So, there's two stop signs that we're working on getting. The police would like us to start with the speed limit signs, which are on order with DPW, and they just...
Before we put the stop sign? Do you want to do a speed limit?
He would like to do speed limit signs, and that way, when you pull, it's, you know, I don't know really what the, you're pulling someone over for speeding, and if there's not a sign nearby, it's easier to have the person get out of the ticket because they can take pictures, and then when they go to court, they can say, well, there's no, it wasn't posted, you know, that kind of thing.
So, are they thinking...
So, we need to post a little bit, and I think there's actually a speed drop as you come down from Chester. But there is going to be a stop sign also at Spring and Union. There's one coming from Chester, but there's not one you come this way. So, it is a pretty straight shot once you have come through. So, that is a nice, something to address. It is a nice straight run there.
So, the thinking is that signs have been ordered, and it's delayed because it comes from the Department of Transportation, so we have to wait for that?
No, I don't know what the holdup on the speed limit signs are. I think you just ordered those. They don't, they don't come from the state or sign.
And the trooper orders them, or who orders them?
I think DPW.
DPW orders them. All right.
And because it's a town road, they're going to install them.
Great.
So, I think that's where the, maybe a slight holdup is.
So, do we have an overall plan of moving that? I think we have two of those stanchions where they have the electric speed sign going. One's on Main Street, I believe, is coming in from Chester right now, and then this one was on Union. The one that's on Union had been on Kelsey Hill. What I've been noticing is they, they capture some data, and then they sit there for several weeks not on. I'm wondering if we might develop a more active plan of rotating those and having them on. Is that something Steve Kraus does, Trooper Kraus does?
He does do that.
Because I'm...
I mean, he moves the signs.
It feels...
But when the battery goes, it's, they're, they're very old, so it takes a while to charge them, and you have to physically go out and bring them in here, charge them upstairs. So, it's a multi-step process that I think is easy to not do because if you're busy, you drive by it. But I will talk to Steve, you know, about rotating, coming up with a plan.
It'd be, it'd be good to have a schedule of it, and, because there are multiple hotspots of speeding in town.
Absolutely. Absolutely.
What does the state say anything about Main Street? Anything?
Well, I reached out to DOT again a couple of weeks ago. They just, they say they'll stop by and look at it. I talked about Village and Main is our big problem because people are parking all over the corners. So, the plan there is to paint no parking on the road, and then also put those no parking from here to corner signs. And once they're posted, then the police say they can tick it. So, we do have some issues there, but my, there's a sightline issue, that first spot right in front of Deep River Pizza, which is on State Road, that the state painted a parking, a parking spot there. So, if you have a large truck there, if you all probably pulled out of Village, it's very hard to look up Main Street because there's something there. So, I've asked them to come and paint over that spot. So...
That doesn't address the speeding, though. That is...
No, we've talked about the, you know, the traffic calming and putting in sort of a speed table in front of the library and narrowing that road. They came down, the DOT, when in your administration, they walked around, came up with a whole plan. It's just trying to get them to implement that plan. They came up with ideas. It wasn't necessarily a plan.
Well, the speed tables are a quick and inexpensive measure. You go down to Long Wharf in New Haven, there by the gas station and all that. There's about four of them down there because the kids go down there and race. I would like to see a couple of them on Main Street here. Because if not, if not, you can have all the cops you want out there. It's not going to, it's not going to slow them down.
Yeah. I think the complaint is the...
Where if you have it at the tables.
Yeah, because it's a state road, and they use the big plows on the state road.
That's a state road down there, too. All they have to do is drive down there by Long Wharf.
So, for the last 18 months, this whole speeding issue's been brought up. This is prior to our current administration. It's ongoing. Understand the complexities of being bisected by a couple of state roads. Thought. This transfer station committee is working extremely effectively, and there's some, some good ideas and action coming out of it. Is it time to get a group of people working on this so they could do all that follow-up? I mean, it could be the only thing you did, Carol, to try to keep track of Department of Transportation.
No, I think it's a great idea. I actually looked into creating a traffic commission, and I looked into it with the state, and there's, there's a little complicated thesis there because it's a state road. You know, the traffic commission would be kind of a piece, you know, easy-peasy on our town roads to make decisions. They can even set the price of these parking tickets if there's town roads, you know. So, but I like that idea. I mean, do you think...
I mean, it might just be bandwidth for you, some, depending on who ends up being the chair or a couple of key people on that, that they could do a fair amount of the leg work and follow-up. You know, the gentleman comes to the cog meetings every month. He could be a help with that.
Yeah, I've talked to Rob about that.
So, the DOT, Grayson, I believe, is getting his name.
Oh, yeah, I thought you meant the cog guy. That's DOT.
I'm just thinking, I'm listening, and it's, it's been building for a long time, and I don't know how you two feel, but I feel that we're not really answering the questions when the citizens raise this. We do in the immediate, we try something, but we're not really solving the problems. And maybe getting a dedicated group of people to work on this would be good.
Not a bad idea. What do you think?
I support it, but again, I'm not making excuses, but with the state, you know, the state has the ultimate say. You know, the committee that we have for the transfer station, that's our property. We can decide on it. That's why I said I would love to see some speed tables put down through Main Street here. If the snowplows tear them up... If the, if the snowplows tear them up, put them back down next year. But we, we have to slow something down and, uh, I, I think we should lean on Norm, um, to get, get some help from our senator.
I'm just thinking of extra bandwidth for Carol on this. I don't think of it as so much as coming up with ideas, but that, while that's good, it'd be more of someone to be a liaison, an adjunct for you, following up on all this stuff with whoever it is, whether it's Norm, whether it's somebody at the Department of Transportation, whatever.
I don't think it's a bad idea. I, I do think they'll get frustrated, because our transfer station people are very frustrated, but change can't happen.
I mean, you could, you could even appoint two people to work on this under your direction just to get it going.
Not a bad idea. All right, let's think on that.
Just add my two cents.
You gotta wait till audience of citizens.
Okay.
Sorry. Your two cents can be...
They'd be a quarter by then.
Okay, so we will look at that.
Thank you.
Okay. Okay, so now we are talking about the transfer station committee. Um, it is just a fabulous group of people, so thank you to the committee if you're watching, led by Lenore and I can't try to name everybody, I'll probably forget some of the people, but, uh, they've been meeting now weekly, every Monday, and really coming up with a priority list of what we should do out there, in their, in their eyes, the priorities. They did graciously meet with the Board of Finance and the Board of Selectment at the transfer station about a week ago, a little over a week ago, maybe two weeks. But it was very helpful, you know, again, to see what's going on up there, to, to see the layout of things. A lot of our residents don't use the transfer station, so, um, it was very helpful to be on site. But they did set a list of priorities and a lot of them are utilizing the ARPA funding, which again is in a table here, if anyone would like to see that. So I just wanna thank them for their hard work. And they do wanna start a big enforcement push and we're thinking, I met with them the other Monday, uh, Monday night, last night, it's a roughing time. And, oh yeah, Tom was there. So, uh, the enforcement will probably start October 1st right now and we have a big dedicated, dedicated group of volunteers, so if anybody here wants to volunteer, um, just basically start checking stickers. So if you have your sticker, you're a Deep River resident, no issues. If you don't have your sticker, Deep River residents, please come to the town clerk, bring your car registration, get your sticker. If you have a special extenuating circumstance, come and talk to the town clerk. We will not give, we don't give stickers out at the transfer station anymore, um, so if you don't have one, they're gonna start turning you away. So again, it's for the, uh, what we heard from everyone back in December when we had the big meeting upstairs, enforcement, 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 you know, why bother? Nobody's checking, so we're gonna start checking, so, um, please keep that in mind, October 1st.
Are they looking into the people that have a, a company vehicle?
Uh, people with company vehicle or lease vehicle, something you can't put your sticker on, please go see the town clerk, 'cause we have a list of exceptions, it'll be allowed. But again, you'll have to go see the town clerk to get some sort of permit, pass, whatever, so that when you go to the transfer station, um, either the staff or volunteers up there can... And again, that's to keep people out that do not live in Deep River, which is what our biggest, biggest thing that we heard at that night, right? It's keeping people out, so. Please be nice to the volunteers, because they're doing it for your tax dollars, so. To save your tax dollars. All right, appointments, so I had Jeremy Chase on here for the EDC, but I believe you two haven't had a chance to touch base with him yet, right?
We've not connected.
Okay, so we'll table the appointment of Jeremy. And then I also wanted to remove some inactive commission members. Donna Grant and Kevin Clark worked very hard when Sustainable, um, our committee first formed, back in 2020, 2021, I worked with them on, um, earning our bronze for the Sustainable Committee. So thank you very much for your hard work, but we do not have term limits on that committee, so the only way to get people off the committee is to basically remove them at a Board of Selectment meeting. So I was asked by the chair to just sort of clean up her roster, because they're still listed on the town website and we don't want the committee to get too big, so if we add new people, then it just keeps growing the committee, even though these people have been inactive for a couple of years, so. So can I have a motion to...
Does the motion, I move that we remove inactive commission members from Sustainable Committee, Donna Grant and Kevin Clark, thanking them for their previous work.
I'll second it.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Do I have to say that if we all say aye? There's nobody else here. Okay, now we move into our second audience of citizens. Tony, go ahead.
Tony, I'll, I'll, so I just wanna jump back to the Main Street project. So Madison went through the same thing and they did put together a committee, they worked with the DOT, they came up with their own plan, and I can send you a copy of it, it's, it's long.
That's Route 1.
Yeah, and it's Route 1, it's, it's a state road, but they put together a committee, they came up with what they wanted to do, they went after grants, I mean, and they set it up for year over year, um, and they ended up putting a median in the middle, which really untrapped it out. And that's, it's not as unsightly as a speed home, it does, and it does really slow things down. Plus, you get the plant stuff in it and it, you know, it makes people visually aware that there's crosswalks there.
I don't think we're wide enough though, 'cause I talked to the DOT about that when they came down. Like, you know, we have to widen the road to put a median in or something, like...
Well, it doesn't have to be added wide, it's that.
Yeah.
And you, maybe you look at, like, moving the sidewalks in two feet, that'll give you two feet in the center. I mean, it's something, if, if you're putting together a committee, it can be done, so it doesn't have to be just purely DOT.
It'd be great if you'd share that and let us know who the lead person was and connect and get some, some of their learnings.
Just for information.
Question for you, even though I'm breaking our walls, but.
Ah.
Um, when you're, the planning and zoning, um, hopefully that passes with the ARPA maybe, your master plan.
Yes.
Uh, is that part of the master plan to come, to address the traffic calming and those kind of things, or?
It is, but we got a lot of pushback from the Board of Finance, that they weren't so interested in the parking, so, but what you guys are saying is parking, so, which is why we search for more, 'cause it, this, I mean, the Village District is pretty big, it's the whole length of the, you know, our town, so.
Well, it's really the speeding issue, I take that out of the parking, I, I mean, I think, right?
I understand, there's just, there's a lot to this, so.
Right, right, okay.
We're gonna put as much as we can into it, we're gonna see what we can find.
Very good. Mike?
Back on the speeding. So, what, I mean, you were not present in my many meetings with Dwayne, Jim and Angus about speeding. If you walk it backwards further, bottom line is, and this is personal conversations with previous resident troopers, they don't wanna give out tickets for a number of reasons. One resident trooper went as far as to tell me, these are people who are on the edge, they can't afford a ticket. And, uh, I, uh, it took me back. So the eighty percent of us who pay taxes have to suffer and compromise what we do for that few percentage, so, but, I mean, that's a conversation for another day with why they don't. So it's, it's not sustainable. You said, the, Steve said, he wants to put speed limit signs before he can give out a ticket. We have speeding signs, I mean, we have speed signs, we have a flashing sign with the speed on it in front of a liquor store. So DOT statistics, I mean, I can give this to you at the point. Forty-two thousand cars a week go by my house. Forty-two thousand.
Forty-two thousand? That's impressive.
A week. The DOT sign, five thousand two hundred and eighty-seven a week, we're going between thirty-six and seventy miles an hour. This is not mine, this is DOT. There are speed signs there, they're not giving out tickets. The only way to sustain this is gonna be like Tony said, is traffic calming. You, you, for a number of societal reasons, the police are not gonna give out tickets to slow traffic down. You're going to have to determine how physically to slow them down, 'cause this is ridiculous. We have, how many registered cars in Deep River? Three thousand? We have forty-two thousand a week. They're, they're not all our residents. And we have Route 9, so if you calm them down, maybe they'll say, I don't wanna drive through Deep River and go, you know, if I'm cutting through, I'm going Route 9. You know? It's a golden opportunity, no one has put the pieces together. And you're, you're losing businesses, who wants to come to a town that's a cutthroat? You know? And that was a previous reason for me not to pursue it, 'cause nobody'll wanna come to Deep River. So, I don't wanna harp on that anymore.
Thank you. I'd, I'd love to look at your DOT things.
And I have 2021 also in front of us. In two and a half days, one thousand eight hundred cars were speeding.
Now, I, my recollection is you, you met with DOT several times yourself, correct?
Uh, once with Angus and once by myself. And they've lowered the bar because of costs. Unless you have deaths and fatalities in a number of accidents, they won't, they won't address it. They don't want. Talked to the lieutenant, the retired, the friend lines of, retired lieutenant state police. Mike, squeaky, the squeaky wheel gets the oil, whatever, that's state lieutenant. So, you can meet with these people and they'll just yes you to death. Unless you, unless the town is vocal enough to say, we wanna do something, 'cause of the economic loss and the safety and equality of life, they'll just hear you, they'll meet with you. I'm just telling you, that's how they work. You know? I met with Angus and that was it, you know, there was no further conversation of pushing that.
Yeah, that seems to have been my experience so far, when I have good conversations, I think, and then nothing ever happens.
And the speeding signs to put before the stop signs? It's easier to give out a stop sign, 'cause if you're not gonna focus and radar gun on speeding, what's the sense of putting up the speed sign? They're not doing a nap. I'm sure they drive, everyone here has probably experienced it on their road, there's speed limit signs everywhere, nobody just pays attention to them, 'cause nobody's enforcing it.
They're not enforcing the stop signs now either, so.
It's a wide problem, but, you know, that's not an excuse to...
No, so we're all, we're, we're trying to move something forward here, so, thank you. Anyone else? I guess Bob, start at the bottom, at the end of the row, start at the bottom, sorry, start at the end of the row.
Okay, it was mentioned that we're not gonna issue the tickets at the transfer station to dump for? Because I just wanna know, the sheets that Jose and I were turning in every month, they pull, where did they go? Who checked them? And why are we doing it? Yeah.
The town clerk.
All the state, and I've heard this at the other meeting from the Board of Finance, that we're not doing our job out there. Well, I'm gonna tell you, all the out-of-state cars that have the stickers had to go to the town clerk to get them in the first place, 'cause we don't do out-of-state plates. We only do the town registrations and you have to show it to us, it gives us the expiration on your registration, so. And we've been hopping around that quite a bit. We've caught people coming from Killmore, Madison, we've thrown them out. I got a phone call two weeks ago from someone from Niantic, wanted to know if we took demolition and I says, yeah, we take demolition, but where are you coming from? They said Niantic, I says, don't bother wasting the gas, 'cause you're not gonna get let in. Yeah. So best of luck to all your volunteers that wanna take over that job.
Well, I think that the idea was to help the staff that's up there and kind of fan out, so there's some days I've gone up there and, you know, where the hopper is, there's literally like four rows of cars across, because people pull right up. So there is an idea of maybe painting some lines down or putting cones, so that people will kind of be in some lines, easier to check stickers on windshields. So, you know, it's a, um, a work in progress, a lot of, I, great ideas.
Two years I've been out there, you know, they asked me to come back for two weeks and I've been there over two years, you know? I know just about everybody that comes in that's from town, I know where their stickers are.
And that's very helpful.
And I'm teaching the new guy about it, you know, what we gotta look for. You know, so I'm starting all over with a newbie again.
So when those lists come in and the town clerk enters all that information? So when you just said, she enters all the, the numbers for the sticker and matches them to license plates and...
You'd be surprised how many people in town don't know where their registrations are.
Well, thank you, thank you for what you're doing out there. Tom?
I, I agree with Mike about speeding, by the way. Tom growth forty-six, how much, right? Were you going to bring up a vote for my point to the TS meeting?
No, I didn't put you on the agenda, I'd kind of forgotten, because I didn't think I got the information out to Dwayne and Catherine in time. Typically, before we appoint, we all will touch base with that person, just to...
Well, I did talk to Catherine as long as she called me.
Okay.
Anyways.
So it'll be the next, I, I can move, do it to you.
You know, you chopping at the bit to get on that, can't you?
Yeah.
All right, I'd love to make a motion that Tom Growth be added to the, uh, Transfer Station Committee. I, I spoke with him at length, uh, and he has a lot of energy and ideas and commitment to improving the transfer station, so.
I'll reach out, I'll reach out to Tom. I'm good with it.
Just give him a second.
Okay, so I think we have to add it to the agenda first.
I'd like to make a motion to add to the agenda, um, the appointment of, of, of Tom Growth to the Transfer Station Committee.
Great, all right.
Second.